Special, special council meeting of the Lisbon City Council will now come to order. Roll call, Bracy Gunderson.
Here.
Hayes.
Here.
McDonald.
Yep.
Sheeple.
You.
We will approve the order of business. I've come to the order, we'll open a special session. Is your motion to approve the agenda as per?
So.
Is there a second? Motion approved. Hold business considering that it's building electrical. So there Hawkins, there sixty-two forty-one. And there's Fiskus. Now, the first page of Fiskus is, I understand, it is the building. Walls. So, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the new shed, okay, we gotta look at the right number. The new shed, we're talking about that. Hawkins is sixty-two forty-one. Fiskus is seventy-one.
You got no other bids besides these, right?
How are, how are they total?
I believe I did the same thing.
It's only about, it's only three. Well. Fiskus is way higher than Hawkins.
Are these apples?
Fourteen hundred dollars more. Thirteen hundred dollars.
I believe so because we got.
Yeah, Fiskus is.
We got Fiskus' bid in and then I, Christie asked.
Fiskus' has two more plug-ins on the walls.
I was gonna say, is this apples to apples?
He put two to a wall. When he missed and has the, has a light on, there's a light on probably outside too.
Now, I asked. I asked.
Hawkins.
You asked me to ask them?
Yeah, I think who's the, the door opener or anything.
Oh, we didn't check on the outside line.
Oh. Yeah, it has one extra picture, it's the last item. I think it has one.
Because I thought that we got Fiskus' bid in and then we asked Hawkins to see if they were.
Oh, it does say one exterior.
Where's this exterior light at, the front and back?
Front.
Because we got Fiskus' bid in and then I emailed Hawkins to see if there was.
One at, one up front of the building. Okay, this just says one exterior.
But the, thanks, the, the fuel barrel.
Oh, with the fuel barrel, okay.
Yeah.
So there, there really aren't comparable then?
Well, they were supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't know how much extra you need after four more plug-ins.
All that's. All I know is when I had two, we went down there doing the barrels, all that. And he, he said this, he's gonna be an easy deal. This just is no problem. But he's been hooking up fuel barrels for Peterson Construction.
Well, he's only.
In the county.
I would like to see a light on the back of the light. And the reason I'm saying that is if this trail goes through.
Well, there ain't no sense putting it on there until we, trail goes through then.
Man wouldn't be dead before that goes through.
Ah, I. Wouldn't it be easier to do the wiring now than versus later?
All you gotta do is run one wire right off, thing is right out there, get the hot wire straight out.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So it's thirteen twenty-nine difference. But how much more is it for the extra? You don't have no way to tell. He didn't bid any whatever, he just put a bid out for. Whatever's extra there, I don't know.
Both the light over the fuel barrels, light up, front of the new shed. Six lights in the shed. Plug in overhead for the.
And how does that compare to Fiskus? Wall pack on front. One twenty amp GFCI. And this doesn't tell us what we're getting, right?
He's gonna put a panel, Fiskus is gonna put a panel inside the building. New building.
And the other guy isn't?
No, I emailed him and they're putting in a panel.
About half.
Who, or who is?
Hawkins said they're putting in a panel.
Or Hawkins?
Because I asked if they were putting in a panel.
It was about half an hour.
So we got three bids.
Sixty amp to a.
We got three bids.
Service feed from.
Crute home.
I don't have one, there's not one here.
Oh, he didn't send one in?
I don't see one.
Okay. He showed up. He showed up.
Hawkins says here, the feed from the existing building.
Yeah, they're coming off that panel, that two hundred amp panel in the building.
So they're not putting a new panel?
They're gonna put a new panel, they're gonna put a sixty amp panel in the new shed.
Okay, and this is coming from the old shed?
Yeah, and they're gonna use, there's all kinds of room in that panel in there, and they're gonna run off that panel out for the fuel pump.
So we don't really have apples to apples here, do we? I mean, we do, but we don't, because you're talking about, this one is one exterior light, that's Hawkins. And Fiskus has.
Two.
But one for the front of the building and one for the.
Fuel barrel.
Fuel barrel.
And they got more outlets too on Hawkins, or, or, on, Fiskus had more outlets. He put two aside.
One on each.
There're gonna be five outlets in that building.
One on each wall for Hawkins.
We can always put in another light later, suppose. We can always put in another light later too.
Yeah.
So we're getting two extra. Two extra twenty amp receptacles, correct? So two receptacles on three walls. So that's gonna be six.
Septile was gonna be.
And Hawkins, so it will come back where this, this, these lights, not in here, we never had any either.
What hasn't he done here?
Two switches, one goes to the fan, lights on that side, one goes to lights on this side. They all turn on one switch. Somehow he got all wired into one switch. So when you turn these on, they'll start flickering back there.
So he's gonna fix that though?
That's been over a month ago, I told him about it.
And we've already paid him, right?
Yeah. He ain't been back. He says, I'll send the guys up and get it.
So that's Mike?
Huh?
Mike Jones?
Yeah.
So I just need to email him to come?
Well, they need to fix these lights, the inventory is not in here.
I don't understand how they would have done that. I mean, each light's hooked up, they didn't do nothing with the switches.
I know, for some reason, you turn the one switch on, it turns all the lights on. The fan, or it should take two of them to do it.
And it wasn't always that way?
No, we always had two light switches, because you could dim them.
Yeah. I don't know how you would, if you're just taking down these and putting them back up, how you would mess with that. Yeah, but that one don't. And that was the dimmer.
Okay, now I turn this one on, don't do nothing.
And what did it do before?
It turned out little, tied them there on. And this, they got, this turned them all on.
Oh, just for the fans?
The fan light. But we got this here.
So which one's flickering?
See that?
You got them turned all the way down?
Yeah. See, when you shove, go shove off, doesn't hear.
Well, these are different bulbs, okay.
Yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, oh, I am like that.
Those are LED lights, those are probably.
They're all LED, these are better LED bulbs. But this here flares up where it shouldn't.
I'm thinking ten bulb instead of the, instead of the wire.
But until, I mean, we run them on one switch.
I don't know how that, how they do it.
Well, you have, you used to run two switches, now we got a switch up there, ain't doing nothing.
All right, I'll call him.
But it's really no big deal, other than this one here flying, right? And that's because it's got different bulbs.
Yeah, some light bulbs are. I went and got the other, I got the other thing to put on it. Take this, that one off, put the other one on, take the littler bulbs.
Well, at least he could explain what he did or didn't do.
He didn't know what he, what he did, because he didn't do it.
Well, somebody on.
His crew did it. His crew did it.
Yeah, somebody.
And I told him that, and he said, well, I'm, I'll make him come up here and fix it.
All right, I'll call him.
So we're getting a light outside, right? Extra. One light out, light over tanks. And how many receptacles?
Four from Hawkins and six from.
So just two more, two more receptacles?
Yeah, and he's putting the seventy amp panel in Fiskus' and. Hawkins is putting the sixty amp.
You're getting four more plug-ins. Because Hawkins just has four and.
He's got eight?
And Fiskus has eight. Two of them, there's G as waterers, special ones. And then the others are just regular, under the three walls.
So for one light over the tank and four receptacles.
And the bigger, he has a bigger panel too.
Yeah.
Seventy amp panel compared to sixty. And Hawkins, or Fiskus is putting in, these lights are brighter in addition. He put them in down at County Yard.
You know how big they are, because this one from Hawkins says they're, his are four foot.
They're what?
You know how big Fiskus' are as well?
Well, I think they're, these are.
My dirty grant is on grain bins.
Yeah.
That's what he's putting in down here.
Are those like the big outside things?
Yeah, so you just go up there and you hook them up.
Oh, you mean they're just like a.
On the outside?
Yeah. No, in the inside.
On the inside, oh my.
Six five thirty-two hundred wood. Yeah.
I can see that thing from miles away.
As I said, just that, Janek can see that, that's a farm. It's like you're crazy.
What's a wall pack?
That's what's on there, I'm sorry. I mean, they're just like a.
Okay. And we don't need any, we don't need any receptacles on the outside of the building for anything, right?
No. And they both have the garage doors. Only, the only thing that's gonna be on the outside down there is the, uh, shut-off switch. Emergency switch. How about the garage doors and openers, where they, the garage door opener and stuff like that, where they.
It's supposed to be on there.
Both of them? Yeah.
Seeing that.
Garage door circuit.
Where, okay.
One says garage door circuit.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about garage door, entry door?
There's gonna be a light out, there's gonna be a light out there.
That's what the building.
The opener was with the building?
Yeah.
I would think so.
So they put the opener up, the guy is.
It would be on the electric.
He don't use a light, he gets a hand.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get that.
He'll hang the open, the doors and the openers.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it just comes down to if you want a little more plug-ins and if you want another light, because we can always do the light later, so. Light can only do later, that's not hard. For thirteen hundred dollars. Saying you.
No, they're not.
What about the quality of work, though, we're not talking about the price? Are we happy with both the qualities of work?
He told me where I can go find one, go find out where he worked at, doesn't always work that.
That's, that's his track, that's his Fiskus.
Yeah.
Just because he's done this, I mean, it's the right.
He wasn't good at track.
Well, no, I get that.
I just know even from very developed, very small, he knew a lot of work for it. He did, he's doing county now, down Martha County, he lights it down there for, did the boxwork with him down there, I know that. And he wired a bunch up at Peterson Construction. And also he did good work there.
Well, what are your thoughts?
And he's got boom trucks. So he don't run off the ladders.
I'm not familiar with any of their work, so I don't.
He told me where I can go, but I can't. Hawkins has been around for a while.
Hawkins has done all our work here.
Yeah, I work with Hawkins too. But this guy does everything himself, he don't have a crew.
How much did we already pay for fuel barrels and stuff? Do you remember?
Fuel barrels? Around a thousand dollars.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand?
Was it sixty-eight hundred or?
It came in a little higher than the job. Yeah, because it didn't have, it didn't have the, uh, hose and the nozzle.
The hoses and nozzles fit in that quote that I talked about, I talked. Yeah, seven hundred is up reached. He did pump. He had all that figured into that quote. When I got them quotes, I talked to Kevin Fiskus, and the pump, the nozzle, the hoses were all involved, they're all in that. Yeah.
I think then a little more than what, some of it was lower.
The barrel. The barrel's only like four hundred and something. And you had that at seven hundred and some dollars for the pump and hose and all that. I don't bring my book to that.
Nutrien, is that who we had do it?
Yeah. But is that the one that bid again? Yeah, he bid. He bid three ways.
Five hundred gallon single wall tank, thousand wall gallon, single wall tank, five hundred gallon double wall tank.
That's what we got, had five hundred double wall tank. That's what we got.
Okay, Fiskus got thirty-nine eighty-three.
That's for tanks, he did that, that's two.
Eight thousand.
Eighty-three fifty-one, eighty-three.
That's what they do. They don't have a, any breakdown of it, do they?
On there, do they break down the way possible?
No, he didn't have a break. Kevin didn't have a breakdown on it.
There you go, there's the input.
So fuel tanks together are sixty-five. Fill rate fifteen hundred dollars.
So by the time we're setting down, fourteen thousand dollars for those tanks. Right?
Does that hook them up too?
Yep.
Well, that's a lot cheaper.
Cheaper than that bid, though, that we.
Yeah, he wanted twenty-four thousand. And that wasn't left electrical.
I think it was twenty-four thousand to them.
Yeah, and that didn't include electrical.
Someone wanna make a motion on that, sir?
Do you want a motion or which one to choose?
Well, I mean, I, I think they're so comparable that, I mean, I think there's not that much to do.
To me, if we're gonna move books, that'll be done to Hawkins a lot, right? If we really want a couple more things in the future, I'm sure we can do that for thirteen hundred dollars. Do you need more plug-ins or? I'm not opposed to Fiskus or anything, I just figure, they're pretty comparable.
Well, there's me, as Darwin called him a month ago, and we're still not up here to fix this.
Oh, we'll get on top of that.
But we have yet, otherwise you can pass, right? They wired our generator? And then I make a motion that we pay Hawkins to do our electric work on the shed. If you can accept a motion.
Is there a second?
Do you wanna add like, what Fiskus had on there an extra or? Just not, I don't know, I'm just, I don't mean to be. I mean, a seventy amp panel and eight receptacles and two exterior lights. That's. I mean, I'm, I'm.
You have to tell me you got that exposed.
Oh, we're not to that point yet.
I'm actually for Hawkins also, but. I mean.
I mean, do you like, wanna make a motion that it comes in about the same as that, if you wanna pick Hawkins or?
Well, do you think you need the extra receptacles in the building or not?
Or do you overdo it now and just?
Future, future use.
That, that whole thing.
I don't, I don't know what the difference, there can't be a lot of difference between a sixty amp panel and a seventy. I mean, there can't be too much difference between.
Probably four more breakers.
Is it four more breakers?
Probably.
And, and will we fill the breakers that he's putting the sixty amp or in? Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not opposed to just leaving Hawkins to bid like it is, I guess.
Well, as long as.
Well, it sounds like those are just.
Yeah, as long as we don't need those other four breakers in the future.
Well, I don't know what, if you, the only thing is, if you have to use more breakers, that means you're gonna move everything for that shed sometime down the road where they're gonna cement it and insulate it. But under that, with the door in, so. As long as this old county shed stayed like it is. You know, like, there's a shop right there. It's all insulated.
Yeah, just being a storage shed, so.
I'd say four outlets in there to get it, no? They will, yeah. Outlet in the other, the old building. If you're gonna work on anything, you don't wanna use that building anyway.
Okay, we have a motion.
So Devon made a motion?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor.
All second.
Ten second. Will call Bracy. Gunderson.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Sheeple.
You.
Motion carried. Now take a look at your gas tank electrical.
Does that say it's from Hawkins? Or does it two hundred and thirty more? First, I'll make a motion to have Hawkins.
More to have Hawkins do the gas tanks. Is there a second?
How?
Mike, will call Bracy. Gunderson. Hayes. McDonald. Sheeple. Okay, now take a look at.
Well, let me do that.
Okay.
I didn't put that on the.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, okay.
John, Peggy John, though.
I'd make a motion with stipulation that from now on, any trees that the town needs are responsible for. The town will give the bids and make the, and we will let an individual.
Resident.
Resident take them down and then we pay them.
My only question, I'm not opposed to that or anything, how are we gonna make sure that happens in the future, like we're all gone? Like on books.
I don't know what to do different, but that's what I'd like to see, because we don't want, we don't want another scenario like.
I agree.
I mean, if it's up to the town, it's up to the town. You know, it's in the town, the market, and the tree needs to be removed.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
I know, I don't know what you're gonna do, but that's why I said the stipulation. But I don't know how you, whether you have to have an ordinance or.
It could probably be.
Update on passing.
We just have to add.
Well, you have, you have to, yeah. It still has the same thing, but.
Like an amendment to the ordinance.
Hey, you're gonna have to do something. More rules, because I'm usually against all of it, but.
That would just make it clear.
But it's a clarification, because. We're all gone in twenty years, and Joe Blow moves the town, he cuts down two trees and just gives the city a bill, you're just running the same situation again.
Well, even, even if next year somebody decides that's what they're gonna do, well, you had opportunity to come up and.
This was the kind of a question we was gonna go through the board, you're also, but we don't have one yet, so whatever, I know, so. I just think it's, you need something added in there and we can, however we do it, go from there.
Say your motion.
I make a motion to pay John Dry for the removal of the tree. With the stipulation, we amend.
The ordinance.
Ordinance to say if it's responsible of the town to take down the tree, the town will take it down.
We just, we're gonna have to have some guidance on their end, how far in, but the board will explain that.
What do you mean guidance, it's just city lines, I mean, they're all defined already.
Well, that's just it, we have to explain, we have to have it in there.
Got to be honest with you. Then a person just find out what Martha found out. I know they got it.
Oh, they're in a ruckus, they're in a ruckus, right, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I know, they took them down on main decree.
Okay, that's Ted's motion.
I second that one.
All right, we got it, two seconds. Roll call vote, Bracy.
Yes.
Gunderson.
Yes.
Hayes. McDonald. Consider tree removal, this is what, you've got two bids. Ledford, Gilden, never give me one. You've got Ledford and John.
And this is doing everything, taking them down, getting rid of them, filling the holes.
As far as, that Ledford's bid says that, but.
Johnson says stump drying will clean them.
It says stump drying will clean them, but it don't say, don't say fill the hole, but it's. But he's.
It says dirt, he called.
No.
Johnson's says it.
Johnson's bid.
Oh, Johnson's did.
Yeah, that's thirty-five hundred dollars more.
I can have that one, you're good, yeah.
I don't see much questions.
Is there any?
And these are all on city property, correct?
Correct. Is there some reason, do you think this is so much higher? Anything different?
I, I, I tried to look up, and it kind of, it's kind of on the line as far as-
By the way, what up?
You can look it up.
And one on Brown's, well, on North Street, aren't you talking about?
Yeah, North Street, yeah.
And all these trees are dead, right?
That's one's tangled up with the light lines, isn't it?
Yeah, could be.
But that didn't bother Ledford any?
No, he-
Is that one on there?
Yeah, it's on there.
Is it on Brown? Oh, North, North Street.
Dead ash tree.
Dead ash tree, seven hundred dollars.
That's not much.
I seen that, some of them are like twelve hundred.
Yeah, where that big, like that two down there.
Where's, where's East, East Street, sorry, is that one tree? East Street.
Is that one by each?
Yes, that's the one right up in front of that.
That's a big one?
There's like four.
Why is it sixteen hundred? I don't know.
Well, it's probably something around that one up there, and it has wires or where?
He lives on Al's.
That one in that corner was sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred.
That's a big tree.
I think it's the sidewalk.
What is it, Darwin?
I think sidewalk, it's right on the sidewalk.
Oh. Where's the one at State Street?
Oh, State Street, there, across the line.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, so they're all dead already?
Yeah, all these I've done picking up there.
I don't think that's a very, I think that's a very reasonable bid.
I agree too.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't believe it.
That's less than a thousand dollars.
A tree.
A tree.
I cannot, I cannot believe that came in that low.
I know it.
All second.
Okay, uh, Snowball made the motion, Ted's second, roll call two for Ledford, to hire Ledford to take the tree. Uh, roll call vote, Bracy.
Yeah.
Gunderson.
Yes.
Ace.
Yep.
Shee. Okay. First payment, I, I'm really amazed that, amazed, that's great, really great. Um, okay, consider first payment to Graham's construction. He's wanting twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. He gets all the materials and half of the labor, as long as he likes, Brice, down paying.
You left just half of it down?
Half of the labor and all of the material.
So the, the thirty-two thousand is just the building?
No, it's the whole thing. That's the whole thing.
Labor and, okay.
Yeah, because what he said was, what he said to me-
Half of that is-
No, he told, he wants the whole building plus half the labor.
Okay.
Well, not the whole, but-
The whole, well, the cost of the material.
Ted, that's what we got.
I've been verifying the twenty-four thousand five hundred.
And that's, that's all coming out of lost funds, right?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Devin, roll call vote, Bracy.
Yeah.
Gunderson.
Yes.
Ace.
Yep.
Eve.
Right, you can, um, you can take a look at what it would cost, uh, Fiskus to price the, to fix the electrical for the Christmas lights, and it seems outrageous to me.
It's not a line deal, huh?
Well, considering we need new lights.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
You know, we could do like Union do, they're just gonna put up banners and do wave-
I totally agree.
Put up what now?
They're putting up banners.
They're gonna put the, the circle, the greenery up, they're putting the greenery up with lights on, and then just banners up on top.
But they still got electricity, it's coming down.
Yeah.
You know, we used to have them, wrap around dang poles. They didn't seem like they lasted that many years, did they? Well, them first ones we had, they were twenty years old before we finally threw them away.
I just need to get some, how many days is it all there in? Oh, we have one in the old ones, we need to, my word.
When we bought, when we bought new lights, Ronnie Matty, we did a, uh, benefit, Ronnie Matty. Gave us five thousand dollars to start it out, so that's how long-
Yeah.
I don't even know who that is.
Yeah. Blake.
What, his grandpa?
And I think, this makes a third set after that.
Okay.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so- No. You think about it.
Yeah.
Alright, folks, um, is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.